Please come to order. I'm going to use my moderator's tablet and send it to the town of Nantucket by Captain James F. Brown in 1898. I'm afraid of it. So, the 2015 special town meeting is now recessed. Thank you for your patience as we wrap up this last-minute details. The first thing that I'm going to do is read the return of the warrant. Pursuant to Chapter 39, Section 10, the general laws of the Commonwealth and the warrant adopted October 14, 2015, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Nantucket qualified to vote in town affairs to appear at the times and place, and for the purposes where they mentioned by posting said notification on October 20, 2015, at the Stop &amp; Shop on Pleasant Street, Town and County Building at 16 Broad Street, and upon the bulletin boards at the corner of Main and Federal Streets and Siasconset Square. Sworn to under pains and penalties of perjury, Catherine Flanagan-Stover, Constable. Okay. Now, because this is a special town meeting, we're going to just get right to business because I know everyone wants to vote and go home. We have seven articles. I am going to do what we call a call of the articles. The way this works is that if you want to discuss a particular article, when I call it out, you should say your name, and I'll put your name next to it. If there's an article that you don't wish to discuss or where you agree with the recommendation of either the planning board or Finance Committee, then you should just let it go by. On the two zoning articles, which are Articles 1 and 2, we will be voting in accordance with the planning board recommendation. On the balance of the articles, we'll be voting in accordance with the Finance Committee recommendation. Before I call the articles, the Finance Committee did provide a comment on both Articles 1 and 2, and I'd like to read those into the record first. So, Finance Committee comment on Article 1. The Finance Committee recommends that the town meeting support the planning board motion under Articles 1 and 2, and further that the Finance Committee recommends that the board of selectmen appoint a working group under Section 1.7 of the memorandum of agreement between the town and Richmond Development dated November 9, 2015. Said working group to consist of at least two members of the Finance Committee, two members of the planning board, Finance Director, the Director of Land Use Services, and members of the public at large. The working group shall meet with Richmond Development and its consultants to work collaboratively on defining the scope of the fiscal impact report required under Section 1.7 of the memorandum of agreement. That is the Finance Committee's motion, comment on both Articles 1 and 2. The memorandum of agreement was reached between the board of selectmen and Richmond Development this afternoon, and that document is available on the Town Booktable. So, any questions about the call of the articles? The Finance Committee comment, it's a comment, it's not binding, it's not part of the actual motion. Okay. Article 1, Mr. Law, I think, Mr. Law, you're calling Article 1 and 2. Okay. Article 3. Article 4. Ms. Andrews. 5. 6. 7. Okay. So, now what's going to happen is I'm going to go through that list one more time, and if no one calls Articles 3, 5, 6, and 7, then we will vote those now according to the recommendation of the Finance Committee as printed in the warrant. Mr. Law has called Articles 1 and 2. Article 3. Ms. Andrews has called Article 4. Excuse me? Oh, all right, Ms. Zota. 3, 5, 6. Yep, 3 and 4. Ms. Zota has called 3, and Ms. Andrews has called 4. So, right now, 1, 2, 3, and 4 are called. 5. Are you calling that, Mrs. Ballens? Okay. 5. 6. 7. Okay. Last call on Articles 6 and 7. All right. Let's see. Neither Article 6 nor 7 requires a warrant. Article 7 does require a two-thirds vote. Article 6, a simple majority. When you vote, you'll be voting the Finance Committee's motion on both Articles 6 and Article 7. A yes vote will adopt that motion. A no vote will repeat the motion. All those in favor of the Finance Committee motions on Articles 6 and 7, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare that those are adopted by a two-thirds voice vote. So, a few little housekeeping issues. Articles 1 and 2 are zoning articles. They do not have a form requirement, but they do require a two-thirds vote. Article 3 requires a 3% form, but a simple majority vote. Articles 4 and 5, because they involve borrowing, require a 5% form and a two-thirds vote. Based on the number of voters that we have, a 5% form is 437. A 3% form is 262. We currently have in excess of 600 voters in the room. We also have some non-voters in the room. So, first of all, we have a non-voting section over here under the eaves, so if you're not a voter, if you're not otherwise allowed to be on the floor, you should be up with the other non-voters. But we have some non-voters who are here to speak on articles. I believe we have Jordi Barrett, do we? Yep, Jordi Barrett, the town housing consultant. Dave Arminetti from the Richmond Group is here. Let's see, Richard Webb, who's the architect from SMRT for the R.L. and Tom on the fire station. We have the owner's project manager, John Lemieux from Vertex Companies. And we have the architects, Todd Costa and Michael McKeon from Castle Rose Architects. Have I missed anyone? Okay. So, with your consent, yes? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Andrew? Andrew Bjork from Richmond. Okay. So, with your consent, we won't allow those people to speak when and if the time presents itself. We have a procedures manual, Nantucket Traditions and Procedures with supplements, Town Meeting Time. Town Meeting Time is the official guide that we use for procedure. It's a little more user-friendly than Robert's Rules. But we also have our own traditions and procedures, and with your consent, I would like to adopt those for use of this meeting. Thank you. So, because we have a form, I'd like to propose that we go backwards and start with Article Article 5 is on page 9 of the warrant. The Finance Committee motion continues on page 10. It is a positive motion. Move that the town appropriate $2 million to be expended by the town manager to supplement the previous appropriation made under Article 11 of the 2015 annual town meeting to pay cost of constructing a new fire station and four-year rent, including the payment of cost of professional services for design permitting, architecture, construction supervision, and other related professional expenses, and any other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, $1 million shall be transferred from free cash and the treasury with approval of the selectmen as authorized to borrow $1 million on Chapter 44, Section 7, 3 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Recognize the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Kelly, for the purpose of making that motion.
So, move, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Now, Mrs. Ballens, I think you've called this. Can you either come down and get a microphone or wait for when the moderator asks you? I'm sorry. Here's what Town Meeting Time looks like, too, by the way, if anyone cares.
Now that I've read the article more carefully, I just withdraw by asking to call it.
Okay.
I do wonder why they suddenly need $2 million more dollars, but I'm all right with it.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Yes. Ms. Zota?
I think that's a legitimate question. Could we know why that the cost has gone up considerably since we voted on this previously?
Sir, certainly. I'm going to recognize our new fire chief, Chief Paul Rude. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Two months ago, we thought that the $15 million originally appropriated would be more than that. In the last couple of months, there's been a dramatic increase in building costs across the Commonwealth, and due to advice on our engineers, architects, and OPM, currently we don't, the $15 million is not enough. We are at a design square footage from 2006. So, in 2006, they designed the building to approximately 22,000 square feet. Our building is still at the exact same 22,000 square feet. It's the required size to house all of our equipment in the current operation we have right now. There's no extra space. It's not quota-sized. It's exactly what we need right at this point in time.
Thank you. Yes. If you could stand up, bring you a microphone. And please identify yourself when you took the microphone.
Thank you, Carrie Mins. So, my question is, we voted on this at the last meeting, and the figure was $15 million. Was it $15 million because we had a bid for $15 million, and that was accepted, and then shouldn't that person be held for that amount of money?
Chief?
No, the building has never been out to bid. It was construction estimates. We haven't actually got the estimate, the final official estimate is yet. So, as of two months ago, we did think that was enough money on the rough test, but it has not been bid on. We have never given any contracts to anybody for the $15 million.
Thank you. Yes, the woman over in that same area, just please stand up and...
My name is Brooke Moore, and I just wanted to ask the question, has it been considered cutting anything back rather than adding?
We did. We looked at the design of the building. We started off with what we thought we needed down the road, and we cut back every square foot we could. We kept just the minimum amount of offices to accommodate the staff we have. We kept the minimum square footage on the apparatus for the house vehicles that we have. We certainly cut every square foot we can out of it, and as we go forward, we continue to cut every dollar we can out of the design.
Thank you. Follow-up?
So, my follow-up question is, basically what you're saying is you want $17 million to build a fire station, but the bids might come in less than that.
We would all hope that the bids come in less. We have no way of seeing the future or knowing exactly what they're going to be. Like I said, there's been a dramatic increase in the last two months. There is a possibility that contracts will be over here for school, and they'll bid lower if they're already over here. We certainly hope that's the case, but at this point in time, we don't have enough money, given the current estimates, to go forward with the square footage for the building.
Mr. Costa?
I just want to make a couple of things clear because I don't think everyone understands the process, and I know when I first became a selectman, I didn't understand it either. When you bid a public project, it's not like building a home. You don't go out and get, you don't go out and put the thing out to bid and then go borrow the money or come up with the money. In a government, in a town or a state project, you have to first have the appropriation in place, and then you put it out to bid. So, when we drew the plans, we got an estimate from the architects and engineers of what they thought it would cost, given the square foot cost at that time. Well, that square foot cost has gone up significantly, and we can't, we have to come back and reappropriate the money. We're not raising taxes for this extra $2 million. We've gotten this money from, well, we are slightly, right? $1 million's going on the appropriation issue. Let me correct that. $1 million's coming from free cash, and free cash isn't what free cash sounds like, but it's not going to go on the tax levy. The other million is money that we are authorized to borrow. So, it's not going to change your tax vote, but we can't continue forward unless we know we have enough money or feel we have enough money to put the bid out.
Thank you.
Yes, the gentleman here on the end?
Hello?
Yes.
So, I guess the question would be...
If you could identify yourself.
Frederick McClure.
Okay.
The question I guess I would have would then, what are the odds that this is going to be coming in at the appropriation that we're voting on tonight? And perhaps the engineers need to address that issue.
And if you could identify yourself.
Hi, John Lemieux from Vertex, the owner's project manager. Basically, what we're doing with the budget is looking at a lot of other projects and live data that's come in over the last few months, trying to project that forward a little bit, and then apply the island factor to it as well, and say, okay, if a public safety facility in situ, it a month ago bid at about $500 a square foot, that's fire and police. Police stations are more expensive to build, so we would hope, you know, just under $500. If you add the island factor, that gets us over $600, $630, $640. You multiply that $640 times a 22,000-square-foot program, that puts you at just over $14 million. Add a 5% contingency, that's $15 million for just construction costs, and then the other $2 million is for soft costs, architects' fees, furniture, fixtures, equipment, kind of everything else that it would take to put the building together.
I'm not sure that responded to the question. I said, what are the odds are that you're going to come in at that cost?
We're hopeful that they will come in under that cost because, if we had a crystal ball, that'd be great, but the goal here is to try to set that budget higher than we think it's going to be. The goal is always to come in under that budget on bid day. You know, what we've seen over the last four months is bids are coming in over. The estimators are having a tough time catching up. So, what we've been going through the last few weeks here is trying to say, okay, what's that number? Well, 15's not going to do it. You don't have enough to build that 22,000 square feet if costs continue to escalate along the way. The process now, we're in schematic design, we've got about six drawings, we're figuring out the layout and the exterior. That program gets solidified, and we move into design development. Before we do that, we get our first estimate. So, if our target after tonight is $15 million, we'll have real estimate numbers two weeks from now, and we'll see where we are. If we're over, we'll back off, and we move ahead to design development, gets us halfway through. Then we'll do another estimate. Where's the number in relation to 15? More or less? If it's more, we'll back off again, and then we'll do it yet a third time right before bid. So, we don't just go for 15 and design for six months with our eyes closed and hope for bid day. We're going to go and check it three times along the way and try to back off if we have to each time if it comes in in excess of what's been appropriated.
And so, the final question would be, if the final bid comes in in excess of what we've appropriated, you have to come back for an additional appropriation?
Theoretically, you would, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Hi, Lucille Jordan. Will the new, will the new fire station be able to accommodate female firefighters?
Yes.
Great. New career.
Okay. Yes, up in the back, Mr. McGowan?
Hello. Good evening, Madam Moderator. Town of Nantucket, it's very overdue that we have a new fireplace in this town. I know I said fireplace. It's very overdue. We have to have a new fire station in this town. We need it, every one of us do. I think that $772 a square foot for the new fire station is adequate, and we should vote for this and vote for it now. I'd like to call a question.
You can't have your cake and eat it, too, but I think we're ready to vote. A yes vote will adopt the Finance Committee's motion on this Article 5. A no vote will defeat the motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That, I declare, has been adopted by a two-thirds voice vote. And you know, before I do that, I was very rude, and I didn't introduce, as I was supposed to, the people who were sitting up here at the table facing you all. You probably know them all, but just in case you don't, starting here at my right is the Board of Selectmen table, Rick Atherton, Matt Fee, Tobias Glidden, Don Hill-Holgate, Bobby DeCosta, Town Manager Libby Gibson, Town Council John Giorgio. Then the Town Clerks table, Catherine Flanagan-Stover, Nancy Holmes. Then the Finance Committee, Jim Kelly. I'll never be able to do this in order. John Tiffany, Joe Gross, Steve Mori. I can't see, I can't see you because Mr. Mori's in the way. Pete McHeckern, let's see, David Worth, and Cliff Williams, and Dr. Mulcahy. Then the Planning Board, Linda Williams, Vice Chair Nat Lowell, Chair Barry Rector, my surveyor friend Joe Marklinger, and that is everyone in the front. And then behind the curtain here, I have Mary Ann L. Novissimo, and they're the people who make all of this work. So... Article 4 is on page 9 of the warrant. I'm going to ask that you waive my delightful reading of the Finance Committee motion. It is as printed in the warrant, and I'll recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making that motion.
So, move, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was called by Ms. Andrews, who has an amendment, I believe she would like to propose, which is to strike the word "new" from the Finance Committee motion so that it would read, "and other related professional services for the construction of a facility for our island home." Is that your amendment, Ms. Andrews?
It is, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? That motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Andrews?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I apologize. As you probably all know, I'm recently bereaved, but I am familiar with our island home intimately. And I know that a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into making the recommendations that we've been presented with at various forums. A lot of, I think, still feel very strongly that the, that the views of the current facility are not replaceable in any way, and that what they provide for the residents, the staff, and the families, and I can speak as a family member, that probably losing my mother was one of the most difficult moments of my life. And to be in a setting that is so connected to the life of the town with boats going back and forth, and merlins perching in the tree over her head, and the grady gretz and snowy gretz and other things in the marsh, that a value can't be set on that, but it is crucial to the care of our elders and ourselves when we become elders. So, my feeling is that the committee that worked very hard and the architects who have followed their lead need to work with us more to get us to accept what they're proposing or some alternative, and that's the reason for the amendment. I know we need to spend the money anyway, and work needs to be done, so it has to start for all kinds of reasons. I hope we won't have a huge, long discussion, but I think this might do the crucial work of satisfying those of us who want it to be where it is and deal with the problems of the site.
Thank you. Is there anything on just the amendment which is striking the word "new"? Okay. So, a yes vote will adopt the amendment. A no vote will defeat the amendment. It does require a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That amendment is adopted. Okay. Now, on the main motion as amended by Ms. Andrews, is there any? Mr. McClure?
I realize this is a very emotional proposal, and the question of our island home means a lot to a lot of people, so perhaps I'll be the devil's advocate, but the first, I have two points. The first point would simply be that the motion, as I read it, doesn't particularly talk to a site. So, how can you spend $1 million to develop a site or a proposal for a site either at the current location or at some other location without designating what site that's going to be? I can't believe that the same building envelope would be proposed for two different sites. The second, I guess, would be, and this is the most controversial part, would be, is the town really should be in the business of being in the nursing home business. And I recognize that that's controversial, but just bear with me. I was born in 1946. I'm a baby boomer, so I'm of a generation who are, might be in the near future, a nursing home. I hope not that soon. But so, the question I would have is if we're... But so the question I would have is if we're developing a site for 45 people, as I understand the current proposal, is do we really believe that that would necessarily be adequate in the next 10 or 15 years? It may very well be that we're designing a site or a facility that becomes inadequate in terms of size. Second, I recognize that I believe that the current island home operates at a deficit which the town supports. So I would just simply throw out as an alternative, perhaps, that we should think about, is that perhaps there is a private developer or private entity that would be willing to have a nursing home for whatever number of residents that we might foresee. And not that we would propose to move anybody from the present site. I know there have been discussions about what would be due if we have to build on the present site, we move people off island or whatever. So my question would simply be, perhaps there, through a private developer or private entity, somebody could build a site on a site and that may work if the town were willing to provide the same deficit spending that it's applying to the current home to a future home or subsidizing a developer for at least some period of time to make that doable.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So I see no, oh, Mr. Ray?
Private citizen, finally. The yellow "new" up there is simply meant that a concentration should be made with regard to the local site, perhaps more of a concentration on the local site. We've talked about relocating this building to areas further inland. Phil Bartlett was right, I think. You take care of the kids and the old folks. The rest in the middle kind of fall where they should fall. This is an old folks issue, and I'm pretty close. I think that facility down there, although may not be salvageable, it is certainly a property that could be reconstructed. When the hospital looked at moving its complete facility to a different part of the island, the town spoke loud and clear, I think, and basically said, no, you're going to have to work on the property that you have. And I think this is something that should happen here, too. I think it's a wonderful location. I think it offers a great deal for the residents of the facility to be able to, if it's all they can do, sit and watch the harbor. I, too, will probably have a room there at some point. And I want to see sailboats and I want to see people scalping. I do not want to see chipmunks and acorns falling out of a tree. Please, let's try to convince folks that maybe we really need to spend more time looking at that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No applause, please. Way up in the back, Ms. Cartunen, I think it is?
I'm Frances Cartunen, and I have a question about money, actually. And it's a three-part question. So I'd like to know from what monies has or will SMRT architects and engineers be paid for the Our Island Home feasibility study that was presented to the Board of Selectmen on October 7? How much? And will they be paid additionally from this $1 million that we're being asked to approve tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Libby Gibson, Town Manager. The first question, the source of funds is the Our Island Home budget. The second, I don't have with me how much they've been paid or billed so far. And the third is, to do the additional work that is required to move something forward for the facility is the appropriation that we're asking for.
Ms. Goss?
There's nothing here, Victoria Goss, there is nothing here that says what, I mean, it says, okay, for the construction of a new facility or for the construction of a facility, but there is nothing here now that limits this to one site. There is nothing that guarantees or strongly indicates that the majority of the islanders that I can hear prefer to have it at its present site. I would like to suggest that we not pass this bill. I know I'm going to have raindrops on my head, but I would like to suggest that we not pass this bill until we get more specific information and more details about what could happen where we are now. And I know everybody thinks that costs money, but there are a lot of very, very talented people with ideas that don't necessarily, it doesn't have to cost money right now, is what I am suggesting, is we can sit on this for another six months and wait and then at town meeting in the spring decide with a little more understanding and knowledge. And if there's a majority of town department heads who think that this is really important in one way or another, then sell it to us a little more strongly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
It's on? Okay, Curtis Barnes. My only question is, are we going to pick the site before we spend the million dollars? Or are we just going to spend the million dollars and figure out how to fit it into the site? I would think we should pick the site and then the million dollars would be well spent in designing to that site.
So let's not have applause because it just slows things down and, I don't know. Do you have someone up there? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Oda, and then I'll come back to you, Dr. Butterworth.
It's a little bit of point of information. The Island Home services our elderly population, but I had a family member who was terminally ill, and he was only 50 years old, 55 years old, and he qualified for our island home. So it services a broad spectrum. And if you've ever been in that position, you'd be very glad that our island home sits where it is and afforded him that view. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Butterworth?
George Butterworth, I would like to propose an amendment that this article specifies that the million dollars is to research a new facility at the current site.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, you know, if the million dollars and we're going to take a chance for that money, we're going to see what we can do at that site instead of passing this, which is wide open.
Just wait. So your amendment would be then to add, say, after a facility for our island home, you would add "at its current site"?
Meaning the immediate area around it, obviously not literally.
Okay. All right. Is there a second? Okay. Now, that's your motion. Did you want to talk about it or did you already say what you wanted to say?
I think it speaks for itself. I think there's many, many of us here who would be very upset to see it moved from that site. You know, we went through this 35 years ago, all of you who were back here then, when the hospital wanted to move it up to their site, and which, by the way, would create real problems now with the hospital trying to extend. And, you know, it was a very emotional discussion. Would you rather be overlooking the graveyard or would you rather be overlooking the harbor? And I got up and voted against the hospital, even though it's where I work, because I thought it was really important to keep it on the harbor. And so 35 years later, we're back dealing with the same issue and I think I want the same answer. I just think it's worth, you know, this represents exactly what Nantucket is. If you stick this off in the piney wood someplace, that could be located anywhere, any community. And what's unique about this is I've never seen a nursing home in a location this incredible before.
Okay. On the amendment only. Ms. Gibson?
We are struggling with this here in the town. We've done quite a bit of work about the current site. As Ms. Cartunen has told us, we haven't done well enough with our public outreach. That's abundantly clear. If we limit this to the current site, there are so many other issues to deal with Our Island Home. It's very complex. The current site, keeping the facility there, has a lot of ramifications to it. There are operational issues, there are regulatory issues, there are issues with keeping the current site operational, the current facility operational, why we would build a new facility. The residents would have to move for a period of time. That is going to be detrimental to some of those people if they are moved. We don't need a million dollars to look at the current site. We need funds to figure out how we are going to deal with this facility moving forward. We need a new facility somewhere. We need to look at current trends in how skilled nursing care has evolved. We probably don't need a million dollars for all of those things, but we need some funds to move forward and limiting it to the current site only is going to be problematic. We all would love to keep Our Island Home where it is, but please believe us when we say that we are struggling with it and it has a lot of issues. One thing we heard at a forum we recently put on last week was people would like to know more about why we think the current site may not work. We would be happy to do that and look at the site more. If the voters believe that we should have a facility there, then that should perhaps go before the voters and we can decide how much we want to spend on a town-run facility. So I would ask you to please not vote yes on the amendment. Vote no on the amendment is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Glawacki?
Oh, I guess it is. Mike Glawacki. And I did go to some of the forums. I'm a little bit late tuning into this issue, but we all know it's deeply emotional. What we heard at the forums and what we just heard now is if we do not vote for this amendment, having the focus be on the current site, the money is going to be spent telling us why it cannot be on the current site. And we need to vote this amendment in order to fully evaluate the current site. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment only. Ms. Oda?
And is it correct that the town owns the land that the island home is on?
Yes.
So if the island home is not there, the town could sell that waterfront property? Is that correct? Just asking.
Not without authorization from town meeting. Would take a town meeting authorization.
Right, but the land would be empty and the town could sell it?
With town meeting authorization, correct, yes. Okay. On the amendment only, yes.
It's sort of a point of order. Is this not expanding this whole article? And I'm just curious on why you think it doesn't.
I think it's contracting the article. Because it's gone from anywhere to somewhere very limited. Mr. Glinn?
This is on the amendment only, Madam Moderator. This is against, I'd like to speak against, the motion to change the article, to move, fix the location on a spot. I think it's something we can do to look into the location. I have two reasons for thinking this is an inappropriate location as much as I think it's a beautiful location. It's in a flood plain. It's not a safe place to have an island home. Maybe we can build a new one that's up taller if the voters think that's appropriate. Part of my job as being a selectman is to remind voters of the fiduciary responsibility that we have to be able to pay our bills. Kind of a rough back-of-the-note analysis of this would tell you that a new facility is going to cost about $40 million on this site or another site. The island home operates at, you know, a $3 million to $4 million deficit. We've got some funding from the state that doesn't look like it'll continue in perpetuity. So that's about $4 million a year. You amortize that out over 20 years, $80 million over 20 years, so it's $120 million. The island home sees about, on average, 60 residents a year. Due to turnover, 40 at a time, 60 in total. So that's about 1,200 residents over 20 years. It's $120 million for 1,200 residents. I, as a young person, think there might be other ways we want to spend the last days of our lives. If we, as a community, vote that we want to spend those days of our lives at a facility, if we understand that's going to be expensive, I think we should vote for that. But also, we should fully understand that there might be other ways that we can spend the end days of our lives at home, and maybe there's other financial models that we can use to keep people at home where a lot of older folks really want to stay. I could be totally wrong. I just want to get those points out there. I'd ask you to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. So on the amendment only. Ms. Benz?
I would like to ask if it is within the scope of the motion, because it's not specifically mentioned, whether or not the charge to complete this evaluation will include the relative costs to build this structure on alternative locations? Or whether or not it is just a generic building project without regard to location? Is that within the scope of the RFP for this? To come up with essentially a cost of, you know, a comparative analysis of the cost in idle location?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, go ahead, Ms.
Nancy Webley, there we go. Six rights landing. I'm a little torn about having this, moving this to at its current site, but I think this is associated with, there really is a lot of feeling about this among the community. And I was with a group of people last Saturday night and we were talking about this. And what, I think what people are feeling is that when you hear, well, we just can't do it here, we have to go someplace else. The request that I'm hearing is we really have to understand what can be done at this site. And if it turns out that it's not going to work for the future, then we, I think we can move on. But there's a feeling that there's just not enough attention to the fact that this is, this is an integral part of our community and it has given, it has given comfort to so many people in this room. And we need to be sure- And we need to be sure we have, we have evaluated whether we can keep it there or not. Sure, it's easier to do it elsewhere, but we really need to determine what we can do with that site. So I was torn, but I say support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the amendment, there's a woman up in the back.
Wellis? Our Island Home. One thing that we are, I'm against at its current site, me of all people, who enjoys that view every day. However, a lot of things that have not been said, Mr. Giddon did touch on it. We are biding our time. We sweat our time every time there's a hurricane. We're twelve feet above the floodplain. We're most vulnerable. It's not a good site as far as what's coming in the future of whatever climate change or whatever hurricanes are worsening, changing trajectory. But the other issue is, is that I have sat through probably a hundred thousand interdisciplinary team meetings, and what is important to the people of our Island Home is not the view. It's how they're cared for, it's the dignity in which they've been treated. They want their privacy in a private room, and they want things that are important to them: socialization, a proper meal, and for people to treat them with dignity and respect. And that can be done anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's not do that. Yes, right here in the, if you could stand up, they'll hand you a microphone.
Hi, Ron Bokage. Is it clear that the decision on siting will have to come before town meeting, either at a special meeting or in the, meeting in the spring? Is someone up here who will have to answer that?
Everyone at the selectmen, almost everyone at the selectmen's table is saying yes. Mr. DeCosta, do you want to?
So there will be an opportunity to vote on where?
Any, any site, any new facility, whether it's on the present site, or somewhere else on Sherman Commons land, or even a third option, will require an override. It'll have to come to this body, get a two-thirds vote, and then go to the ballot. We can, if, if this, this body decides that they want to only have it on this site, we can design it on this site, but it will probably cost more money than another site, and we will have to displace the residents of Island Home for a period of time. We can't, there's, we've, we've spent a lot of time looking at this site, and we can't build on this site without demolishing the old building. There's just not enough land. The new regulations require a lot more space in the, in the facility than when it was built thirty years ago, and to have the private rooms and the dignity that Mrs. Ellis talks about, we'll need to use the majority of that footprint of that land. It's only two acres for this facility. So we'll have to take the old facility down and build a new one. So we can keep it here if you want, but just be prepared that we may have to ask the residents to leave for a little bit of time.
Yep, up in the back. Wait.
Hi, Mary Richrod. It's my understanding that, over the years, we have had a number of plans drawn out for the Island Home, and I just don't want to see going through a million dollars of plans to have no changes made. So I do think that this should be kind of shelved until we have much better understanding of what we're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Fee?
I urge you to defeat the amendment and support the article. If we're painted into a corner like this, we won't be able to address some of the issues that we're talking about. I fear that if we're painted in this corner, we'll come back to town meeting in a year or two years, and the number that Toby had, a hundred and twenty million, I'm worried it's going to be two hundred million, and people are not going to accept it. So, you know, I just, I'd be careful what you wish for. I give you my word that I'll do everything I can to examine that part of the, you know, of keeping it where it is, but please don't force us and make a decision that's going to turn out bad in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think on the amendment, requires a majority vote. The amendment is to insert the words "at its current site" in the finance committee motion. A yes vote will adopt that amendment. A no vote will defeat the amendment. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment is not adopted. Okay, now we're back on the finance committee motion as printed in the warrant, as amended by Ms. Andrews, with striking the word "new." This does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare that that is adopted by a two-thirds voice vote. Okay. Article three. And while we're turning to article three, I want to mention, I didn't go through time things at the beginning, but the basic time thing is, on the main article, the first person or the person who called it or presented it gets five minutes. Everyone after that gets two minutes, except if it's your second time speaking, one minute. And I'd really ask you, as we go along, to respect those, those time parameters. Article three starts on page eight, continues onto page nine. The finance committee motion is as printed in the warrant. This requires a majority vote, a three percent quorum. I'm going to ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading of the motion and recognize Mr. Kelly, the Chair of the Finance Committee, for the purpose of making the motion as printed in the warrant, Mr. Kelly.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was called by Ms. Zoda. I will go to you.
Maria Zoda, Three Diana Speech Road. I'm currently your CPC member-at-large, so because they are an applicant, I've been able to study the details of this large construction project at length, and everyone knows that it is a larger building, on a bigger footprint, with six dormers. I'm still personally weighing the pros and cons, and my reservations have to do with the fact that I really need to hear the town's commitment to this large, long-term project, that they're going to absolutely support the Natural Resources Department for the long term with staff, budget, funding. This is a very big facility. I think it's warranted and it's important, but I want to hear from the town how they're going to support our Natural Resource Department in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson? I hate to have you get all dressed up and not get to talk.
It's a rare day. Good evening, everyone. Jeff Carlson, the Natural Resources Coordinator for the town in Nantucket. I'd just like to clarify a couple of points that Ms. Zoda brought up. The structure that's in existence, the, the building next to the lighthouse on Brand Point, this construction project will not change the size of that building substantially. There's a little wart on the side that will be added, but the bulk of the building will remain exactly the same. It's a historic structure that was put there in the 1920s, and we've had to vet this project through the State Historic Preservation Office, through the HDC. They've received permits from all of those offices, and the town has been very committed going forward. I mean, just recently, we've added a water quality biologist, and we've also have, you know, a shellfish biologist that's been here for about five years. And I think the town has been very focused on water quality initiatives, eelgrass management, shellfish management, and I think that the commitment of the town has been there, and I ask you strongly to, to support this article.
Thank you. Mr. DeCosta?
To Ms. Zoda's point of whether the town continues to support the Natural Resources Department, as Mr. Carlson said, we added staff this year. Bay scalloping is the last, repeat, last commercial fishery that Nantucket has. Water quality is probably one of the most important things for me on this board. I know since I've been on the board, we've made numerous initiatives to continue to keep the water quality in the harbors and ponds, and to improve it wherever possible. The hatchery under the new facility will be able to grow immense amount more seed than it does now with the same staff. It'll be more functional than it is now. Not just bay scallops, but coal hogs and oysters. Aquaculture is the fastest-growing part of our shellfish industry in Nantucket. All you got to do is go up into Walwynet and DePulvis Harbor and look at all the leases. They're finally at the point where they're starting to make some money with these leases. Guys have put up, I can't even tell you how many hours in without any return yet, and they're finally at the point where they can sell some of these shellfish. I think Nantucket has a long, deep history and heritage of commercial fishing, especially bay scalloping. We're one of the last harbors in New England that still has a substantial bay scallop fishery. And all you have to do is look at this year's crops and realize that last year, we didn't have a fully capacity, a full hatchery that was operating at full capacity because of the construction, and you'll understand why we want to get this appropriation in place and continue with the work, because if this, this is voted through tonight, the hatchery will be up and running a hundred percent by spring, spring spawning season.
Thank you. Okay, this article requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion of the Finance Committee as printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That is unanimously adopted. Okay. So, Article two. Article two starts on page three of the warrant, continues to page four. The planning board motion is on, starts on page five, continues to page six, and to page seven, and then to page eight. I would ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading of that motion. Thank you. I want to point out that when we vote, we are not voting on either the planning board comment or the Finance Committee comment that I read into the record at the beginning of the meeting. Those comments are informational only and are not part of what you're voting. The motion itself ends with the sentence, "except as expressly provided by Section 13930 of this chapter." Recognize Chairman Barry Rector of the Planning Board for the purpose of making that motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. I think I'm going to you, Mr. Lowell. I guess I should say one thing before we get started about Article two. As you know, there was the memorandum of agreement that was entered into today by the Richmond Group and the Board of Selectmen, available on the town website. If there's an amendment to this article, there's a provision of that agreement that requires, well, that allows the Richmond Group to vitiate that agreement if the amendment is deemed by them to be substantive. So if there are amendments to this, you're going to see me stop and ask the Richmond Group to give us a determination if it's a substantive amendment or a non-substantive amendment. Have I explained that properly, Mr. Giorgio? Okay. So... Mr. Lowell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Sorry, little problem here. First, I'd like to thank everyone for filling up the stadium tonight to discuss housing. And I just want to declare one thing, this is nothing to do with 106 Surside Road. Anyone in here thinks that we're discussing or voting on something to do with 106, that is not correct. An incredible amount of time, effort by so many people have gone into these two articles: staff, town administration staff, the selectmen, Finance Committee. Meetings were juggled in all different directions over the last three weeks to get these articles in this meeting to happen tonight. I'd like to thank the Richmond Group for paying for tonight's town meeting. This is very important, everybody. So I am here to speak first, to get everyone, hopefully, calm down about housing, if I can do it. I don't know if I can, but I'm going to try. These articles are companion articles. This article is actually needed to come before Article one. Okay. The land in question that we're discussing, everybody knows Wally World, it's going to get developed. One way or the other, that property is going to be developed. So we have to get that in our mind, okay? Thirdly, it's going to be a lot of technical questions tonight. There are people in this room, a lot smarter than me, that can answer those technical Right now, I'd like to talk about local control. We all love local control. We just had a local control discussion about the Island Home. We love our pond opening to be done the way we want. We went through a big deal about twenty-five years ago about that, remember? We like to deal with our own harbor issues. We like to deal with the steamship, even though we don't always get on the boat we want. You got our phone numbers. You can't call the state and say, "I want to get on the boat." Okay? The sewer issues, remember when we had a consent order in 2005 to shut down the sewer plant? Moratorium on hookups? The landfill, ninety-seven, in this room? We voted to have what we have today, right or wrong, that's what we voted for. We do not want a McDonald's solution to housing. We have an opportunity to have a very unique working relationship through the special permit process, along with the MOU from the, from the Board of Selectmen, HDC review, just like everything else, to create enough housing to get us to seven percent. That stuff will be touched on by this lady right here, Mr. Arminetti, and some other people that know what they're talking about when it gets down to the gory details. So what I'm trying to explain is that we, we have a chance to do something that we've never had the opportunity to do before. The rubber band of affordable housing has snapped. We just didn't know it was stretching. We only discuss it every so many years when a 40B application comes in. We don't really think about it after it goes away. This issue has been festering for years, just like the last issue we just discussed at the Island Home, just like previous issues with the dump and the septic and the sewer plant. So I would like to turn this over to Mr. Arminetti from Richmond. He's a good guy. You guys might like to, get to know him. He speaks very well and has the knowledge that we need to understand the technical details of these articles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Arminetti?
Thank you, thank you, Liz. Thank you, Mr. Lowell. That's a lot of pressure now to put on me. And thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dave Arminetti. I'm Director of Real Estate Development for the Richmond Company and Richmond Great Point Development. Many of you who know me know that I manage the day-to-day activities of Richmond with our strategy in planning and permitting for our properties on the island in what Mr. Lowell termed as Glowackiville. Day-to-day, I do that in conjunction with my colleague Patty Rogavine, who virtually all of you know. I want to thank everyone for attending. We know a special town meeting is a little different. Everyone's coming out tonight showing the interest and the commitment to this critical issue to the community, and we appreciate that. It's still a little daunting for someone who's It's still a little daunting for someone who's born and bred in New Bedford to be on Nantucket Town Meeting floor, but it's my third time, and I appreciate the privilege. So why are we here? Why did we propose this? We have a housing crisis. I think everyone can admit that. To illustrate that, I want to make a quick point about what, stealing a line from Mr. Lowell, is economics we discuss. Not economics, but economics. And I'm gonna cite and illustrate some figures quickly that we track. They're not our figures. They're from Jennifer Shalley at Windwalker Real Estate, whom many of you know, who does some great research in this area. Just to illustrate the magnitude of the problem, in the last three years, single-family home sales in the island have been very consistent. And here's the average. Eight out of 10 single-family homes in the last three years have sold for more than $750,000. Eight out of 10. Seven out of 10 single-family homes in the last three years have sold for over $1 million. A million dollars. It's simply not sustainable. So tonight, we have a choice how to start to fix the problem in a meaningful way. And that's why we're here. That's why Patty and I hit the bricks and went out, and a couple hundred of you and our neighbors were willing to sign to get this meeting started tonight and start to debate this and make a real contribution towards the solution. And that's what we want to be, part of the solution. We have the capability, we have the land, we have the financing capability, and we want to be part of the solution for the community, starting tonight. The issue we face is very, very complex and difficult. Housing, affordable housing, how to manage the impacts of development and density. But the decision we're here to make tonight, we believe, is a very simple one, and Mr. Lowell touched on it. Do we want to have local control and local input and embrace that? Or do we want to get stuck with a state-mandated process under Chapter 40B and have very little local control and very little local input? We think the answer is simple. And then we want to roll up our sleeves with the community, all the boards and all of our neighbors and abutters who have worked so hard to get started on this process, and start to solve it. That's why we're here. And if we make the right decision tonight and going forward, the hidden benefit of all this, for the greater good of the community, is we can single-handedly be the biggest ally that the town and the community have to create enough affordable housing units to bring the town what's called "safe harbor" under state law. So the town can actually defeat unsuitable or hostile 40B housing projects entirely or slow them down so they either won't happen or be more difficult to happen. That's a very rare thing. Virtually no other communities of this nature in the Commonwealth reach that status. And we're here to help you and the community do that, starting tonight. Why did we propose this? The editor of the INM, Mrs. Stanton, raised this question in one of her columns a couple weeks ago, which is a very good question. There's a healthy skepticism when a developer proposes something that seems like it's too good to be true. Why did they do it? What are they gonna get out of it? Is it too good to be true? Our motives are clear here, and also very clean. We get something out of this deal. We get a lot out of this deal. Primarily, we get two things that are very valuable to a real estate developer or a real estate owner. We get certainty of the process. We know what our permits are gonna be. We know the boards that we're gonna have to go in front of, and we know the community that we're gonna have to go in front of and prove ourselves to get these permits. And we get an expedited process. If we do this right and the community embraces this process, we can move more quickly than a 40B process could move. And we get to be part of the solution. But we give up a lot, and that's critical. We give up all the zoning waivers that would be allowed by law under 40B. We give up our exemption from input from all the other local boards that we would get by law under 40B. We give up all the protection of the state under what's called the Housing Appeals Committee, which is where a 40B project goes if the developer and the community can't agree on the outcome of that project. And as your consultant said a couple weeks ago in a seminar that the town administration and the Board of Selectmen were so good to host, gentleman by the name of Ed Marshon, nine out of 10 decisions that go to this Housing Appeals Committee are decided in favor of the landowner and the developer, not the town. Again, we want to be part of the solution. We give and we get. That's the nature of a good compromise, whether it's with your spouse, or in business, or with the government. And that's what we have on the table tonight. Let me talk about affordability for a few minutes. We were here in this venue in April, an annual town meeting, and we proposed an all-market-rate housing project for about half of the land that we're talking about tonight. And we heard you loud and clear, our neighbors and the community. We want defined affordability, and we want guaranteed affordability. And don't come back until you can give us that. Well, we're back, and we have a great project to talk about. We have defined affordability, and we have guaranteed affordability at a scale that's never been seen before in the town and will probably never be seen again. Let me talk about how affordability can be created. There's only one of two ways you can create affordability in housing, especially in such a high-cost area as we face here in Nantucket with the high cost of land, the high cost of labor, the high cost of materials. You can either do it through a subsidy, getting money from the government or another source, or getting free land, or getting CPC funds. We're not asking for any of that. We're not getting any of that. Or you can do it through an increased density. That's what we're proposing tonight. A little bit of increased density for a heck of a lot of affordable housing to protect this community and to sustain us into the future with real affordability, real housing targeted to the year-round middle class of this community. Not the million-dollar homeowners, not the $2-million homeowners. We're providing real affordability in terms of numbers. If this is approved over the next few years and we develop the 325 total units of housing, we're gonna add 244 units of affordable housing to the town's inventory, which Mr. Vors and Ms. Barrett, the town's housing consultant, can speak to more. But the bottom line is, every town in the state has to get greater affordable housing numerically, or they're subject to exposure to these 40B projects and other hostile development projects. We're the biggest single solution that contributes to that in the town. Overnight, we can increase the town's percentage of affordable housing from 2.47% to 7%. We're targeting this housing primarily to year-round residents by giving them priority in the selection process. We're giving 100% priority to certain of our affordable housings, which would not be allowed under state law. And let me talk about the economics again for a minute. One of the products we're offering is a housing price that would be consistent with what the Mass Housing 40B guidelines are, but in a friendly way. We're gonna offer 19 affordable, single-family homeownership units, all-in, brand-new, turnkey move-in at $300,000. It's a brand-new, three-bedroom house on a 5,000-square-foot lot in our neighborhood. Secondly, we're gonna offer seven locally affordable, single-family housing units that we couldn't offer under the 40B process because it's disallowed by law. And the Board of Selectmen, to their credit, really embraced this concept. Again, we're trying to target year-round islanders who missed the cycle perhaps in the Satrum's Path project that we all know about that's been done over the last couple of years. Because of the high costs and the high income here, the normal state income standards don't apply. So this would be proposed where people making up to what's called 175% of the area median income could still qualify for our affordable houses under this program that we're proposing tonight in a collaborative way with the town. You could make up to $164,500 per year in gross income and still buy an affordable house in our development that's less than $600,000. I believe the covenant house price this year is $675,000. So with our program, if you vote for this tonight, people will be able to make $25,000 more than the income limit in the covenant program and buy a house for $85,000 less, brand-new in our development. Real affordability. We know there's a crisis. One of the things we've found is that there seems to be a misperception about who's subject to the crisis. Is it just seasonal workers or service employees? Hotel, restaurants and bars, landscapers, contractors, airport? It's not. Those people are affected, but the rest of the community is affected. People in every walk of life, every industry. Town employees. Ask Mrs. Gibson how much trouble they have retaining and attracting good employees for the town because of the housing issue. Fire and police. Nurses and lab techs and schoolteachers. And I'll relay a little story that really drove home to me, because my father was a public school teacher for 30-some years. About six months ago, about a month after we were here for town meeting last, ran into a schoolteacher, started to talk a little bit, understood. They'd come here about seven years ago, master's in teaching, just like virtually all the teachers in the school system. Loves Nantucket, been here six or seven years. The kind of teacher that takes money out of their own pocket to fund field trips and arts and crafts for our students. That kind of person that the community wants to attract and retain. The only thing they could find and afford in the last six or seven years was a tiny one-bedroom apartment with no kitchen and a hot plate to cook on. For $1,800 a month. A glorified dorm room for a teacher that's teaching the youth of this community. That's who's affected by this housing crisis. So when you make your decision and you deliberate tonight, don't approve this for me, don't approve this for Patty, don't approve this for Phil, don't approve this for the Richmond Company. Approve it for the schoolteacher who deserves more, and approve it for the long-term sustainability of the island. Thank you very much, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. So, I know. I know. All right, Mr. Ray?
Nobody knows more about the housing nightmares on this island than I do. And that was a very polished presentation, and I thank you for that. I have two questions. First of all, how can you guarantee that this housing will be provided for year-round individuals? How can you not allow corporate entities from buying these structures and utilizing them for dormitories?
Madam Moderator, through you. There are a couple of different vehicles, Mr. Ray, that we can use. First of all, one of the main bodies of the memorandum of agreement that we signed a few hours ago with the Board of Selectmen that we've been working on for several weeks has provisions in that that are contractually binding to us in terms of the affordability and the targeting of that. And one of the things that a couple of the selectmen were instrumental in, in conjunction with us being on the same page, was we're gonna restrict the rental housing to leases of no less than a one-year term in our entire property. And we're gonna restrict leasing of any of the single-family homes to greater than 30-day periods. So no short-term rentals, no short-term employee rentals. In terms of the sales, we're proposing a maximum of 100 single-family ownership units. We have to be a little careful because there are very clear fair housing laws and discrimination laws that we can't violate. But we can target our marketing, and by the type of product we're doing, we're gonna limit the number of parking spaces, we're gonna limit the number of bedrooms, and we're gonna privately limit, which has been confirmed in law, and Ms. Barrett, the town's housing consultant, can confirm this, Mr. Giorgio, town council, can confirm this. There is case law and there is precedent that you can limit the number of unrelated people in a dwelling unit by covenant to prevent that problem. So that's the primary vehicle we're gonna use. And it's enforceable by an ironclad contract that five of your Board of Selectmen members signed a couple of hours ago and that Mr. Paston signed. Black and white.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Janie Howard, Mike Amman Avenue. I wanted to just provide, from my own personal experience as a 62-year-old guy living here, and having seen back what happened in the previous generation, and I've been around here now off and on since 1991, so I've been watching this for a while. I was talking to my dad today. My dad's 85. When he came out of Korea in 1954, he bought a house for 12 grand. He was 24-years-old. He had us kids. By 1956, he had three kids in that same house. He managed to be able to move forward. He did well, or I wouldn't be here, and thank goodness for that. Jen Shalley's numbers are always phenomenal. I'll give you one from my own perspective, though, as a real estate agent on this island. There's a guy that I was privileged to be the buyer's agent for on a property last year. One of the hardest-working kids. He's in the entertainment business, he's in the hospitality business, but he's year-round. Saved, worked, saved. 29-year-old guy. The only one that I know of, by the way, and all the experience that I've been here, in his 20s, that actually pulled this off. And he bought the only single-family home that was available on Nantucket in that period of time, over that four or five months, for $570,000. 12 grand to $570,000. He's almost 30. He's got no kids. He's got a wife to be. I was privileged to have the opportunity to be able to do it, but we could not find him anything else. This is a good project. This is what we need. We can't be having a circumstance like that come up over and over and over and over again where it's that limited. These kids are living, 15 people to a house, six people to a house. Richard's spoken to this. We can't have that. It's not fair for these guys and girls to be coming up to 30-years-old and not have a piece of it their own. This is the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benz?
I'd just be curious, in the memorandum of understanding that was signed, how the limitation on unrelated individuals living in one of these places will be enforced. We've had that on the town books forever, and it has not been enforced. Be nice if it were.
Hi, Patty Ragavine. I'm with the Richmond Company. As you know, I'm also a neighbor here on Nantucket. We have a couple of mechanisms. We are very much interested in keeping this development a really nice development, a wonderful development. We have basically started working with the neighbors surrounding our development, looking at what might be something we provide them, as well as in terms of security, just along these lines. The homeowners association that we intend to create will have restrictions on this kind of use. The management company, Richmond Company, will retain management over the property, so it's not like we're building these and leaving. This will be a long-term effort that we continue to monitor and to watch. You can't tell us anything new, given what we've actually inherited there in the properties with respect to homes and rentals. What I've seen personally in the last two years is horrific, frankly, and there is no control. We are working closely with the new health director. I know that a lot of the problem on the island is it's hard to turn people out when there's nowhere to go. And so we're all stuck between a rock and a hard place. Well, we know what the rules are, but what are we gonna do about it? The only way we can solve that problem is to have more product. Because with more product, no one is gonna spend $1,000 a month, and I've heard of this, to live on a couch. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The gentleman in the front row of the back section in the white shirt. Hold on.
Mr. Damon, I like the project, but I don't like this idea that you're covering all the expenses here. Is this gonna be a trend in the future?
The expenses of town meeting?
Yeah. It kind of entices people along the path that they want to be voted.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the woman here in the pink shirt, go ahead and stand up. We'll get you a microphone. I think it's Kate.
Hi, Kate Raphael. My question is this, is that I feel like we very often have short memories. And I, up until just last week, owned a rental. And it wasn't long ago there was a major recession in this country, and it affected this island. And quite frankly, it was hard- it was hard-pressed to find anybody who could even afford a rental of any price. And in fact, lowered the price $700 a month just to find someone to fill that. So I guess what I'm wondering is, are we reacting to coming out of the recession? Are we overreacting to it? Is this something we have to have? I just, I guess I'm concerned about what happens when the next recession comes along and all of these people have to leave. and all of these people have to leave because there's no work.
Mr. Arminetti?
If you hand me the knitting needles, Liz, I'm not going to know what to do. I'll be in trouble. Thank you. It's a good question, ma'am, and it's one that we've thought of quite a bit. We're in a very strong economic time now, we're in a crisis, but that could change. The good news about that is twofold. There's so much pent-up demand right now, particularly on the rental side and in the pricing segments that we're talking about, that we will probably sell these houses and rent these apartments three times over. An example is, many of you know, we got an approval for a smaller all-market apartment project in the last few months from the planning board and the historic district commission at the corner of Greigland Avenue and Nancy Ann Lane in our property. An acre and two-thirds, 28 units, and six two-story buildings. In two weeks' time, with zero advertising, either in the paper or any other source, just word-of-mouth on Nantucket, which is the greatest thing ever, more than 150 people came down to our office, pounding on the door, all hours of the day and night, looking for Patty, chasing her down the street to apply for these apartments. Our answer unfortunately was, we only have 28. We got 150 applications in two weeks with no advertising. And the good news, one of the things the community's concerned about, I know, so we'll answer this question in advance, it's good in this context, are we going to draw a lot of people over from the mainland? Because you provide this housing, especially such attractive, affordable housing for Nantucket. The answer is no. In a way, that problem takes care of itself. Of the 150 applications we got for these 28 apartment units, 149 were for permanent islanders with employment on the island. One was from off-island. And as Patty said at a hearing a couple of weeks ago, it was a woman who used to work at Nantucket Hotel, couldn't keep her job because she couldn't find housing, and wants to come back. Local housing, local solution. The other answer is, we have a large, very financially capable company who's in this for the long haul. From the day we came here, and Mr. Paston stated our intentions, we're here for the long haul to do what's right for Nantucket. This is not a one- or a two-year project. As Patty said, we're not going to sell and run. We're going to be here for 10 or 15 years. We're going to build this out in phases. If things slow down a little bit, we'll put the brakes on a little and we'll only develop as many houses as we can. But we have a huge amount of land, 65 acres total. This proposal relates to about 30 acres, and we have the ability to calibrate that flow and that demand in the market unlike any other landowner. We don't have to sell and rent immediately to still make a return that's reasonable. We can be patient, and we can stick around, and we intend to.
Mr. Fredericks?
Miss, Madam Moderator, I had two questions, if I could, through you, if possible. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about the timeline. Certainly, one of the concerns that I have is how quickly this might happen. But it really relates then to a second set of questions that I would like to ask the planning staff. As I understand what would happen here, this vote allows certain zoning changes, but then there is all of the subdivision regulation that the proponent has to go through. And the one that comforts me the most about the plan is it has to require then a special permit. And I wanted to confirm through the planning staff that a special permit is something that can be opened from time to time if we feel that it's not meeting all of the needs or expectations that we talked about tonight.
Mr. Vorse?
Thank you, Andrew Vorse. So the question about the special permit, what is, what is important and what is great about Article II is it, it does require a special permit that is issued by the planning board. It's a supermajority of four to five vote. In addition, there is also subdivision, subdivision control, the subdivision control law, which is the subdivision of the actual property. And the permit would be subject to major site plan review, which has a whole list of standards regarding traffic and drainage and all kinds of things. That was strengthened by the agreement signed by the Board of Selectmen, and I'm actually very happy at that process and the work that they did. So, and furthermore, the special permit, if we do find violations, we can, at our own initiative, call the special permit, and it gives us additional strength to enforce it. Thanks.
Thank you. Did that answer your questions, Mr. Fredericks?
The only other question I had had to do with the timing of the project, and the phasing, and are there initial phases, or are the law presented?
Okay. Mr. Arminetti, do you want to answer that?
It is a good question from two perspectives. Again, we can calibrate the phasing based on the market and the demand, and we have the financial capability to do that. We'd like to move very quickly in the initial phase. That's part of the magic of this solution as opposed to going through the 40B process, which would probably take at least a bit longer. If we move quickly and we make a decision tonight, we could probably get this approved and get the units on the town's inventory in six to eight months and get in the ground next fall. I mean, I'm sorry, later this fall, if we move that quickly. The first phase, because of the amount of demand, will probably be larger than the recurring phases in the future. We'd like to do probably about two-thirds of the houses in the first phase, so there'll be plenty of inventory to take all this pent-up demand. We're also going to sell some lots on the single-family side and build some houses, so we'll have a diversity of product. And, Mr. Fredericks, as you know, that's important in terms of trying to absorb a project into the market. So we'll have both types of product, not just built houses and not just lots, but both. And then, secondly, the phasing is very important, and it's probably more appropriate for Mr. Vorse or Ms. Barrett to talk about this, but it's very important in terms of the safe harbor protection with the town, that we can protect the town from inappropriate development by phasing the product and the project properly. And part of the memorandum of understanding with the Board of Selectmen, as we previously referenced, has those provisions in it. Again, the phrase I've been using in the last couple of weeks is, "Politics makes strange bedfellows." Well, affordable housing makes strange bedfellows. Here, a developer can be the best ally of the town in improving your standing with affordable housing and protecting you under this safe harbor provision. And that's part of the phasing that we're going to work on cooperatively with the community and with the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, up there in the back, Mr. Frederick, do I think you have someone?
Hi, I'm Jenny Paradise. I live on Pine Crest Drive, which is off of Old South Road, not too far from where all this is going to happen. And I am for the project, I'm for these articles. That land back there has been ill-used for many years, and I think this is the best use for it. I also think collaborating with the town to plan this properly and do it right, instead of having it rammed down our throat by somebody else who doesn't care about us, is, it's just the right way to go. So, that's my, those are my two cents.
Thank you. Ms. Kuspa?
It's Anne Kuspa, Housing Nantucket Executive Director. I'd like to speak in favor of these articles, one and two. Housing Nantucket, for those of you who don't know, we're a local nonprofit dedicated to creating affordable housing solutions for the island. And this spring, we conducted a housing needs assessment. Judy Barrett and the planning office also helped to assist with that. One of the recommendations of the report was, well, first of all, there is a extreme housing need here, for those of you who don't know, and it's across all price levels. And one of the suggestions and recommendations was that we, as a community, work with a 40B developer to create this type of housing. Housing Nantucket supports this for a couple of different reasons, one of which is that 75 units of affordable housing are created through this zoning change. Another thing I wanted to mention was that Housing Nantucket also directly benefits from this zoning change through a land swap that we did with the Richmond Company. So there's a lot of different benefits for affordable housing, and I support this, as well as the rest of my board and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman up sort of in the mid, yeah, right there, if you could stand up?
Hello. My name's Rich Ross. I live on Newtown Road. I just had a quick question. Is it possible for some of us who didn't get a chance to see the special deal that was made between the Board of Selectmen and the Paston Group, to actually see what that deal incurred tonight before, you know, voting on an article that has that as a stipulation? Is that possible?
Good question. Let me see if I can be more persuasive. All right, we'll, we'll work on that for a minute. Yeah, way up in the back.
Nick, Nick Miller. I have just a technical question. The word area median income, can we please define that as Nantucket County?
Where, where are you, Mr. Miller, in the, in the recommendation, so I can?
Look near the bottom of Page 4 and also a few times on Page 5. Paragraph 4C.
4C.
Annual area median income. I simply would like to make sure the area is Nantucket County and not some larger area.
I'm not finding that. Fourth line, what page?
Page 4.
On Page 4, but Page 4 is just the, is the...
Paragraph 4, sub-paragraph C, fourth line down, area median income.
Okay, but that is the article? I need to see where that occurs in the motion. The motion starts on Page 5?
On Page 5, you'll see the same word, area median income, in paragraph, in Paragraph 1, about workforce homeownership housing.
Okay, let me find it in there, then.
And rental housing.
Below 175% of area median income, and then below that, under workforce rental housing, 80% of area median income. And you want to say?
Nantucket County.
Nantucket County area median income?
Yes.
Mr. Arminetti, is that an amendment that is substantive?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Wait a minute, first of all, let me just, let me say this. Mr. Miller's suggestion is that we add Nantucket County in one, in the definition of workforce owner, homeownership housing and workforce rental housing to define area median income, so that it's Nantucket County area median income. Is that your amendment, Mr. Miller? Okay. Is there a second? Okay, motion is made and seconded. Now, I'm going to go to Mr. Arminetti, and then I'm going to go help these people find it.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I think we get the sentiment, sir. Unfortunately, from a technical standpoint, this is a financial figure that is established every year by the federal government, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. They come out every year, generally in the third quarter of every year, I think it is, Ms. Barrett, October, November, if we're lucky, with an annual update to the median income for every county and every metropolitan area in the country. It is a number that's specific to Nantucket, but technically, and Ms. Barrett can answer this even better than I, it does change from time to time the exact geographic area. So I wouldn't limit it to that from a technical standpoint, but there might be some language that can get to the sentiment of what you're talking about and result in the same result for the community.
Through you, Madam Moderator.
Judy Barrett, RKG Associates, I think I might be able to help with this. The income limits are set by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, based on geographic areas that are actually defined by the Federal Office of Management and Budget, and those geographies change about every 10 years. So the risk you have in trying to be too specific in your zoning is that if the geography somehow changes, the only way you can sort of fix the problem later is to come back and amend the zoning. I think the real answer is that elsewhere in this article, the affordable units are required to be approved for the subsidized housing inventory in accordance with the rules and requirements of the state local initiative program. And that program ties you back to what the appropriate income limits are. So as long as Nantucket County is the geography, the local initiative program will basically provide that cover for you. So I don't think you need to be any more specific in the article.
Okay. So on the proposed amendment only, do you wish to pursue that, Mr. Miller? Are you willing to withdraw that?
No, I think that's a good answer.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to withdraw that amendment and just go back to the language of the motion as it was printed in the warrant. So on that motion, I'm sure there are other hands. Is there a section I've ignored? Let's go over here. Yes, please stand up, and when you get the microphone, state your name.
Natalie Seminero, formerly of Essex Road, and I now live on Macon and Avenue. I, I'm hoping I'm doing this right, because I'm going back to the open discussion that we had.
Yes.
So I think that everyone in the room can agree that we have a situation. It's a problem, it's a crisis. And as a result of the crisis, there have been multiple backlashes and further issues that have happened on the island and that in many ways affect all of us. So, I love the idea of this proposal. I want to trust our elected officials. I want to trust that we all have the betterment of our community at heart. What I am most, I shouldn't say most interested, where I am still very interested in is what Patty had mentioned before in, in response to a question and a concern over, I don't want to call it policing, but the, how we can protect from the numbers of people that could be living in a certain unit. Speaking in terms of landlord tenants, landlords have no rights. So, you know, if we have homeowners in there that are renting, even if they don't know that there are 10 people living in their home, I can tell you, there's nothing they can do about it. So I love this idea. I want this to be a very realistic possibility for Nantucket, for friends of mine who are looking for homes, for teachers who are looking for homes, and landscapers, across all diversities, across all economic standards. But again, I'm going to come to, will it be made transparent to us if we're going to take the chance and not only welcome, but embrace this situation and this opportunity for Nantucket? Will these proposed policings be made transparent to the community members here in some way that you can assure us that what has happened to some of us and some people we have known, well, how will that, how is that realistically going to be policed? Without me getting any further, I'm looking at Richard Ray looking at me, he knows what I'm talking about. How is this going to be monitored? That's my question. So that it's used for the right purpose and not abused by a very growing population as a result of, obviously, problems. It happens because there are problems. So I just want to know if that's going to be made transparent to us, all of the ways that these proposed solutions are going to be actually implemented.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. No? Oh, there it is. You know, the, one of the things I think we want to keep reiterating today and reminding folks of, when we look at this development, one of the most important core components of it is that it's going to have to go through a special permit process. That process will include a lot of regulations on what we can and can't do. That's why we're all feeling more comfortable about this local control. That's why we're all feeling more comfortable about this local control, because that's the process that will help us get that confidence that Natalie's looking for. I know Judy has an answer, part answer to this too, Ms. Barrett, but I want to start out by saying just that. If we go to the state and go through that, there are no guarantees that this kind of abuse frankly will go on, and all of us know it, and all of us know people that have been part of it. And I go back to again my other answer, which is that when there's no, when there's no place to go, all right, people will put up with this. Who's going to pay for that kind of living arrangement if there's someplace brand-new, safe and reliable to go and to live through? So on a purely economic basis, I think we've got it licked, on the fact that the local control, this planning board and its regulations are going to be on top of that in far as regulate, you know, as far as controlling our homeowners, the establishment of a homeowners' association, the requirements of a homeowners' association, and many of you are part of homeowners' associations, you know they don't sleep, we know better than anybody else who's got what going on, right? It's not, it's not a big secret when you live next door. That's what we're going to be using. It's going to be self-policed because our neighborhood is going to want a certain character. And I think that that's really where we're going with this. Will we continue to work with the town? I hope so. I think once we can free up some products, some availability, then the town is in a better spot frankly to go after some of the more abusive situations. And now I'm going to hand this, is through you, Ms. Moderator, to Judy Barrett.
Okay. Ms. Barrett?
Certainly through you, Madam Moderator. In addition to everything that was just stated, I guess I'd like to point out that it is a requirement of the Affordable Housing deed restriction, that the homeownership units be monitored on an annual basis to determine that the buyer who benefited from the unit is occupying that house as their principal residence. So there's both the special permit protection that you get under the zoning that's being proposed here, but the deed restriction itself requires that annual monitoring for the affordable units, and it is certainly in the island's interest to make sure that that monitoring is done because you wouldn't want to lose those units from the subsidized housing inventory, and certainly that is one of the consequences if you don't monitor the units properly. So there is actually a requirement in the deed rider that requires those units to be occupied as principal residence.
Thank you. Yes? Go ahead.
Molly Glazer, Skyline Drive. I want, if someone could speak about the process of the traffic and the decision where the roads are going to be out of this project.
Mr. Vors or Mr. Arminetti, which I don't, either one?
Thank you. The, there's two ways that the traffic and roadway network will be reviewed. The planning board will examine subdivision if new roads, well, for the portion of new roads that are being proposed, and will have input into how they are laid out, what their surface is, and what the route is. In addition, the major site plan review requires a traffic study, so Richmond will be required to fund a traffic study. Richmond will also be required to fund a peer review, so a peer, basically a traffic engineer hired by the planning board and reporting to the planning board, will review their traffic report and point out any inconsistencies and make sure that all the information is correct. All of that will be reviewed during our public hearing process, so there's an opportunity for people to review those plans, to ask questions, and to make their positions known to the board.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I actually have two questions. Would you like them one at a time or should I ask them together?
Just ask them together.
Okay. The first question is, I wonder if we could ask Mr. Arminetti for a little bit of help with the arithmetic. It's not clear to me that, you know, we have in excess of 11,000 housing units on the island. It's not clear to me how the number of units that are, affordable units are going to be added are going to get us from 2.4% to 7%. Without getting too technical about it, it just doesn't seem to compute. And then secondly, I just wanted to go a little further on the question of traffic. I mean, I know we can do studies and that's all that's going to be required, but I would like to get a stronger sense that there's going to be a lot of consideration paid to the fact that Old South Road is almost impassable now, and if you were to suddenly add 200 or 300 new housing units out there, I mean, it's, what would result is almost unimaginable. So I'm wondering what, you know, how the issue of phasing is going to be addressed. Will the, hopefully some of the road improvements be made before we start or in conjunction with the development so that there might be a turning lane or improvements to the existing rotary, or, you know, maybe we will add the rotary at Fairgrounds Road, or some of the many improvements that have been discussed, are they actually going to start to happen in conjunction with this so that we don't find ourselves sitting in traffic out there and saying, oh, my God, whoever let this happen while we're sitting in our car for two hours waiting to get to the airport? So a little bit more informational on those lines would be helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett?
Thank you. For you, Madam Moderator. The percentage of affordable units is based on a denominator that's comprised of your year-round housing, not your total housing. So the units that are counted by the Census Bureau is seasonal, do not factor into the denominator.
Okay. And then traffic, Mr. Vors?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So traffic, first of all, I guess our first step is we need to get, we need to see if this passes, number one, and then a traffic report will be issued. What is great about the phasing is that we will see a total mitigation plan, and I think you all know that we have different plans that have been on the books that are working their way through the capital budget process now. With this project, we may need to advance those, we may need to get contributions from Richmond, and all of that really comes out through the process. I think it's, it's very important to have the phasing because what Mr. Miller said is correct. We'll be able to plan out, especially if we reach a safe harbor provision, we'll have a little bit of time to get all of our plans and have these various studies done and not be under the gun for a 40B timeline, which is, which is quite rushed. So the phasing works for us, it gives us an opportunity. I think we will see what you suggested, we probably will see increments, we'll see maybe turning lanes, we might see, I don't know exactly what the final mitigation package will look like. It really has to come out of that traffic study. Once we have that information, we'll be able to better assess that.
Thank you. Mr. DeCosta?
I just wanted to make a couple of points. The first was to the lady's issue over here about, about forcing the, the, over the subletting of the units. This is the MOA, and I'm going to read from a paragraph from it. Rental units shall be set forth in a permanent deed restriction prohibiting subletting of rental units shall be set forth in a permanent deed restriction and enforceable by the town. This MOA is, in essence, a contract. It's binding between the town and, and the Richmond group. We don't have that in any of the other rental homes on the island. We can't, you know, that's up to the, to the owner of the home to, to enforce how many people are living in there. We, this gives us a lot more clout with that. The other thing I want to emphasize is we're going to get these houses out here, whether it's through this initiative which gives us control or 40B. In other words, if this was defeated tonight, the Richmond group still has a 40B application pending in front of the state, and they're going to continue with that if this doesn't pass. So one way or another, there's going to be those houses on that land. I for one would much rather have local control, including the HTC, the planning board, and all the neighborhood input, than to just let someone at the state house decide what's going to be built and how it's going to be built.
The gentleman up in the first row of the back section?
Hello? Madam Moderator, my name is Scott Allen, I live on Daffodil Lane. I'm sure everybody at the very front of the room recognizes me from the multiple meetings that we've sat in on and requests that we've made to them. My house at 25 Daffodil Lane is part of a subdivision, Cedar Crest 3 and Cedar Crest 1, that was started by Mr. Glowacki himself. It is not the pit, it is a NaShop-style subdivision that is U-shaped, that has one large entrance on Evergreen and a secondary entrance on Miller Lane and then cuts over to Daffodil. At the meetings that I've gone to, I've requested to have additions to either the MOU or through the planning board to not have roads cut through this new subdivision into our current private subdivision. Unfortunately, up to this point, the planning board's not been willing to help us with that. The Board of Selectmen understandably weren't willing to really touch that because it's a planning board issue, but I'd actually like to add a motion with an addendum that I've provided. I can read it, or you can show it.
We're getting, we're getting there.
In essence, it's requesting that there be no connections from this new subdivision into our private subdivision. So in the maps that you've seen either online or in the newspaper, we continue to draw these roads coming from cul-de-sacs, that are cul-de-sacs in my neighborhood, and turning them into a road into this new neighborhood. There was one initially on Daffodil, there was one initially on Mayflower, and there's one initially on Evergreen. Plans change, subdivisions change, but we're already asking for denser, more dense housing in these areas, and that's what this article's about. This isn't the pit that we're rezoning, this is a neighborhood that exists right now.
I want to get your amendment up in front of everyone, so...
So do I.
Just let me interrupt for a second. On the top of page seven, let's see, you see right at the very top, you have the end of sub-paragraph B, then sub-paragraph C, and sub-paragraph D. We're adding a new sub-paragraph E. This is being added to workforce homeownership housing bonus lots, which is access to from any of these workforce housing bonus lots shall either be off a public roadway or a new subdivision roadway unconnected to a private approval-required subdivision roadway. And then in three, workforce rental community, basically right at the bottom of page seven, we're adding similar language, a new sub-paragraph E, access to slash from any of these workforce rental community lots shall either be off a public roadway or a new subdivision roadway unconnected to a private approval-required subdivision roadway. Is that your amendment, Ms. Barrett?
It is, and if I could just add one thing, in the last couple of weeks in our discussions with Richmond directly, Mr. Arminetti, Patty, they have suggested that they have no interests in roads that cut through into our Prairie Village neighborhood, that it's specific boards that are requesting that. Again, I, I'd just like people to consider this, if you've bought a house and you have an HOA that you believe protects you, that your, your house is going to be built a certain way and your roads are going to be used a certain way by a certain number of people, that that shouldn't be changed and you're supposed to be protected by that. Richmond's offering that protection, I'm asking you all to vote that protection in for us as well as the neighborhood.
Okay, so is there a second for that? Okay. That motion is made and seconded. Now I have to ask the Richmond group, is this considered a substantive amendment?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Moderator. It is certainly a substantive amendment under the warrant article and would invoke the provision in the MOA that we signed to the Board of Selectmen to, as you termed it, vitiate the agreement. We certainly appreciate the genesis, Mr. Allen's thoughts. We think a better way to deal with this is to go down the process, through the special permit process, with the planning board, with the other boards, and work this out. We've indicated, as Mr. Allen expressed, and it is in writing, to the Cedar Crest Homeowners' Association, that we will do everything we can to work with them, to plan this properly, to minimize the possibility that any roads would cut through their neighborhood, and if we couldn't prevent any cut through at all, we would use design capabilities such as making the configuration more circuitous and difficult to get through, either by routing or the path or materials or using speed bumps and speed tables, to prevent it from being what I think the neighborhood is really getting at, and which we understand. If we don't do this right, there's a risk that roads cutting through that neighborhood could become a shortcut to and from the airport and a circumvention to Nobodya Road, Nobodya Farm Road. We absolutely don't want that. That will harm us as much as it would harm the Cedar Crest neighborhood. So we're definitely aligned in that respect. We just don't want to constrain the zoning article from mandating that not to happen. And in an odd way, once we get working with the neighborhood, they may come to the conclusion that some small, circuitous, minor cut through from the neighborhood could actually benefit them because it could allow them to get to and from Old South Road and to and from the services of our development more readily. So we'd like a chance to plan that out with the neighborhood. We've made a written commitment to the neighborhood, we're going to stand by that written commitment, but allow us to make that process work out through the planning board, and don't stop it here in the context of a zoning article. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Town Council, Mr. Giorgio, just for a couple of points. If you could explain, Mr. Giorgio, first of all, what effect this has under the MOU and then the other issue?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I wanted to make two points with respect to this amendment. First of all, in my opinion, this amendment is not a proper subject of zoning. I think it would, it attempts to regulate through zoning the rights of butters to both public and private ways, and in that regard, I think it's inconsistent with the subdivision control law. As the previous speaker indicated, these kinds of issues are appropriate to be dealt with under the subdivision control law and subdivision approval, which, as we know, the planning board will be going through that process for this particular project. So my concern would be that if this amendment were passed, it would certainly create a real possibility of a legal challenge to the zoning amendment because I don't, do not think, or at least it raises a question as to whether it's a proper subject of zoning. Secondly, with respect to the effect that this amendment would have on the MOA, we were very careful in that MOA to provide a mechanism to anticipate what would happen if amendments were made on town meeting floor. This is one example, but there are of course many others that could potentially be made that would in effect be substantive, and it would in whole or in part delete the whole purpose of this zoning amendment and the potential impact it would have on, on the Richmond group to proceed with a project that they at this point have said is economically feasible. So we heard from Richmond Development that they consider this to be a substantive amendment. So if this amendment passes, and then the zoning bylaw as amendment were to pass, Richmond would not be obligated to fulfill any of the requirements of the MOA, and yet the town would have amended its zoning bylaw. So I think that's something you need to think about carefully. This is a substantive amendment, and the Richmond group would have the right, under the agreement, to vitiate the agreement that was signed at 5:00 tonight.
Okay. So on the amendment, Dr. Butterworth? Well, we have the MOA, it's just, it's 15 pages long, so... Yes, go ahead. There's page one, part of it.
Oh, it is up, okay.
Those are the whereas clauses, those are kind of not important. Okay, stop. I mean, I have no, there's really no meaningful way for me to share this agreement with you short of reading it out loud to you. with you, short of reading it out loud to you, which I'm more than happy to do, but I don't think you want me to. Yes, please.
Madam Moderator, so, we've been at this for quite some time now, negotiating this memorandum of agreement, and let me tell you that it was a very hard negotiation. There was a lot of give and take. There were points when I thought, gee, this is not going to happen, and yet, both the Selectmen and the representatives from the Richmond group, over the course of the last week, got together several times to hammer out the details of the MOA. One thing I can tell you is that all of the discussion, and in particular, the representations made by the Richmond group, by the Director of Land Use Planning, by the town's housing consultant, by the Selectmen, are all in accordance with the specific provisions of the MOA. In essence, the MOA is intended to provide a mechanism whereby this project, the Richmond group, can proceed with the development of the project exactly as it's been described to you, with a Planning Board special permit process, rather than requiring a 40B process. And as you've heard several times tonight, the problem with the 40B is that you essentially run the risk of losing local control over the project. This MOA provides for local control, not only by the Planning Board through the permitting process, but also, as Selectman Acosta said, this is an enforceable document, which the town, through the Board of Selectmen, can enforce, if it has to, independent of what the Planning Board may decide to do with respect to the various permits. There are a lot of other provisions in this agreement that are very technical in nature, but they're all designed to ensure that the intended result occurs. That is, the units that are constructed pursuant to the MOA and the special permit will, in fact, count towards the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory, and will increase the town's percentage of units on that SHI, not to 10%, but certainly a lot better than where it is today. So, we've looked at this. We negotiated it, and we think the MOA carries out certainly the representations that have been made here tonight.
Thank you. On the amendment, yeah, in the back row of the first section, if you could stand up and just get a microphone. On the amendment. Okay, no, I know, but I was trying to recognize this woman here in the gray sweatshirt. I think she's on the amendment.
Yes, on the amendment, my name is Mary Longacre. If I understand what the Town Council said correctly, our choice with any amendment that Richmond group deems substantive is that if we include an amendment, we could quite likely end up worse than we are right now by passing this article potentially, but not having any agreement from the Richmond group as to how they're going to be controlled. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So, on the amendment, let me see.
Barry Rector, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'm going to ask you something very simple tonight, and that is to defeat this amendment, and I'm going to ask you something very simple again. Do you want local control? Do you want the state to control this? That's what is before you tonight. Make no mistake about it. You've heard from Mr. Arminetti, and you've heard from Town Council, and I would also argue as well, too, this borderlines on contractual zoning and actually puts town meeting as the authority and approving body of something that would properly before subdivision control law. And I think you're going to find that would create multiple problems with this. And here's the thing, too. One of the reasons why I like local control is I know with the Planning Board, it is a special permit. You're going to have to get four of the five of us to agree to everything happens. You will be heard. There is adequate time, and believe me, as the Chairman of the Planning Board, I take very seriously the fact, I want to hear from anyone who's there. So, show up, please, because we do want to hear from you. And here's the real beauty at this point. When this is done, when this is finished, it really never is finished, because as a Planning Board with a special permit, if citizens come before us, or we believe that we've erred, guess what? We can reopen the public hearing and start the process and look at what went wrong. So, I think there's a number of safeguards that sit before you at this tonight, and let me tell you something. I'm pleased that the developer has gone forward to do this. This is rare in the process, but they realize that putting it in the hands of a local control can also merit benefit as well. So, again, I'm going to ask you, please defeat this amendment. Please go with the recommendations of the Planning Board tonight. Let's take control of the situation for us and this town, and be sincere about what we want to do for affordable housing and those people who are around us who desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, Mr. Clinton? You want to, well, let's just vote on the amendment. Why don't we do that? Okay, so, the amendment requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the amendment. A no vote will defeat the amendment. The amendment is to add these two paragraphs, one under workforce homeownership housing bonus lots, and the other under workforce community rental, rental community. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment does not carry. So, now we're back on the main motion as printed in the warrant. Before I take any other motions, I need to ask Mr. Rector, as Chairman of the Planning Board, to please report for the record the Planning Board's favorable recommendation on this article. I know you don't even understand what I'm asking you, because we never do this, but Town Council has suggested that the Planning Board needs to report its recommendation for the record, and your recommendation was favorable. I just need you to state for the record that the Planning Board records a favorable recommendation on the motion on Article 2.
You learn something new every day. Thank you.
Exactly. Never a dull moment here.
For the record, the Planning Board unequivocally supports such. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that good, Mr. Giorgio? Yes. You're welcome. Ms. Fitzgibbon?
Thank you, Bonnie Fitzgibbon. I just have to say that with all the talk that's been going on, personally, I'll just say, I feel like I'm a little bit hijacked here. We're going to get it one way or another. We're going to get it either through 40B or through a development company, and I certainly understand the need for affordable housing on this island. So, that said, on a personal note, I also want to ask the Richmond Corporation if they have looked into the impact of this development on the wastewater treatment plant, on the infrastructure of Nantucket Island. This is an extremely dense development. I know, I think earlier you said a little bit of density, but I think this is going to be a tremendous amount of density overload, or certainly is going to increase the density a lot on Nantucket's infrastructure. And I'm wondering if you've looked into the impact of this development on Nantucket's fragile environment.
Mr. Arminetti? She could probably just hand you the, there you go.
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. Thank you. It's a very good question, and one that we have looked into in great detail over the last two and a half years since we've been planning and have owned the property. Let me point out one question about the density increase. There's a lot of facts and figures that are in the motions and the articles and that we've thrown around. There's maybe a misperception as to exactly how much density we're asking to increase in relation to the existing zoning, and again, I'll refer to Mr. Vorse if the community needs an independent confirmation of this. Under existing zoning, we can develop approximately 260 units on this property, 260. We're committed to contractually limiting ourselves in the memorandum of understanding to 325 units. So, we're not doubling or tripling or quadrupling the density that we can develop on our property under this scenario. We're only asking for 60 additional units. We know in the context of Nantucket, that's still a lot of units, and it's still something that needs to be looked at very, very carefully, but there has been a misnomer around in some of these discussions that we're exponentially increasing the density, and that's just not the case. To the question that the lady asked, since about the second day we've been out here on the island, we've been working with Kara and her staff at the DPW, the new town engineer, Silvio Gennaro. We've had, I think, through you, Kara, no less than 12, 15 meetings at your office. I see David Gray there, the senior plant operator, who's probably tired of hosting us at your office at this point. We've hired a civil engineer to do an extensive analysis of the generation of all the wastewater and the water generation with the WWC, and all the analysis proves that we will generate a fairly substantial increase in wastewater. The good news is, we have an existing sewer pumping station right across the street from us, across Old South Road, within the NASHOP development, that is owned and maintained by the town. That one is actually in pretty good shape. The one down near the airport, not so much so. Nonetheless, we have committed, and that document will be a contractual obligation in writing between us and the DPW and the Selectmen in the very near future, to not just building the infrastructure within our property with private funds, with our money, but upgrading the entirety of that pumping station to the specifications of the DPW and their engineer for the long term. So, the numbers, the way they work out, even with all of the entire development of our property under this higher density, with the commercial, the industrial, the retail that we hope to build, 20 to 25 to 30 years out, we're only going to contribute 3% or 4% or 5% of the flow of that pumping station. But we've committed to paying for 100% of the upgrades that are necessary, and that monetary figure right now is somewhere in the vicinity of $200,000. That will not just benefit our development and take care of all of our flow, but it'll benefit all the properties around us within about half a mile for the long term. And we know it's the right thing to do. We understand we're coming in here. We're the new guys on the island. We want to do the right thing, so we're not asking for NASHOP to contribute to that. We're not asking for the Emporium across the street, who just expanded their facility by a significant factor, to contribute to that. We're going to step up, make that commitment, and pay that bill. And it's a very good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Turbini, I think?
My name is Damian Turbini. I live on Skyline Drive, and I'm very concerned. I know we need housing, but what about all of us? You know, I grew up in Dorchester. I work real hard. I could have built, I'd kill myself, and I said, I'll build in a two-acre zoning area. I can't see where all the cars, the traffic, and the impact it's going to make on the Surfside, which Bob Moody had so thought about years ago, to make this nice community, and I feel like I'm building Dorchester right in my backyard. And they've already cleared a road coming into Skyline. Ed Lindberg, building a house on Skyline, trying to plant trees. Glawacki had a road going into Webster. I can't see where everybody and anybody isn't going to just drive right through. And like someone said before, there's Old South Road's already a mess. And it sounds like, no matter what we do, you guys are going to do this. I don't understand the blackmail. I feel like I'm being threatened, and all my life work that I've done, and everyone in that community, we all feel threatened. And I really hope that just in the need that we have, there's other options. There's Tom Nevin. What about all this land that's everywhere? The Old Navy Yard. Why is it so desperate that it be right in a two-acre zoning area?
Thank you. Okay, Mr. McColl?
Follow-up question somewhat related to the question the gentleman just had, but I haven't had an opportunity to review the agreement between the town and Richmond. But I just ask, I guess the first question would be, is Richmond entering into that agreement as the current owner and in control of the entire Glawacki property? And if that is, the answer to that is yes, then I have a follow-up question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good question, sir. We are in full control as the fee owner of the entire 32 acres that are subject of this zoning amendment. And if I may, maybe I can even anticipate your question. Of our own accord, we offered this, and the Board of Selectmen and Town Council, being wise, demanded that we also make the memorandum of understanding binding on any successors or assigns of the property. So, anyone we sell the property to, whether that be tomorrow or 20 years from now, is subject to the same binding contract that we signed with the town.
Thank you. My follow-up question is simply, I'm not sure how much this particular Article 2, how much property it relates to of the entire so-called Glawacki property, but if it's, are you in owners or in control of the entire Glawacki property?
Madam Moderator, through you, the acquisition we made, depending on how you want to characterize it, the Glawacki property, Wally World, et cetera, the entirety of that acquisition was about 65 acres, all in the core of this area and Old South Road, basically bounded by Old South to the north, Lovers Lane to the west, Skyline Drive to the south, and Evergreen Way to the east. We also acquired a few properties that were located downtown and towards the waterfront. Those are kind of extraneous to this area. But this core area, we acquired the entire 65 acres. We still own about 55. We've sold off a handful, primarily of single-family homes, to local individuals. After we got those houses up to meet code, which was quite an undertaking, as you can all imagine, and then we've sold off about 10 or 12 commercial industrial lots along Gregland Avenue. So, we don't own 100% of it anymore. That was never our intent. We were always going to sell some properties out into the market to locals, and if you are more interested in hearing some detail about who the buyers are and who the new users are of this land, we'd be glad to share that. They're, without exception, all locals who own businesses on the island, contribute to this community, and live here. It's the not-so-sexy part of our portfolio was that core of commercial industrial properties for day-to-day businesses of the island, that this community rezoned with us in annual town meeting 2014, and that the Planning Board and the planning staff and the committee that was formed for the NASHOP Crossing Area Plan advocated for so strongly, and that we support so strongly. So, we still own about 75% of it, and as Patty mentioned, in the context of long-term commitment to the island and management, we will own all of the entirety of the apartments, which is about 14 acres, and will own all the entirety of the single-family houses, which will eventually be sold out as individual lots and homes to individuals, but we will continue to oversee that and control it through a covenant through the Homeowners Association.
Okay, and so my, the final comment would be, then you are in control or responsible for any of the activities that are currently going on in that property, including that property that's just behind the Skyline Drive owner's property, including filling and the cut-through to Skyline, two cut-thrus to Skyline Drive?
We're, it's a bit of a technical question. We're in control of remaining property that includes an existing paper street that cuts through from our property at 20 Dave Kim Road to Skyline Drive. Three of those properties that directly front on Skyline Drive, we have sold to individuals, including Mr. Lindberg for a single-family home, another individual at 48 Skyline Drive for an individual home. But we own basically all the land behind it that connects out to Skyline, including the paper street that we have started to improve as a street that would provide access to the Skyline Drive neighborhood, so they wouldn't have to go all the way around Nobodya Farm Road to the airport intersection to get on Old South Road and to get into town. To that particular point, and to the gentleman's question, which we are sensitive to, the traffic study that we're going to do, as Mr. Vorse has traffic study that we're gonna do, as Mr. Vorse has referenced a couple times, we'll look at this in great detail. But the good news for the Skyline Drive neighborhood is, there's no huge demand driver in Skyline for people to go to. We're not close enough to Surfside and to the beach to have people use that as a direct cut-through. And the route itself will be very circuitous. You'll have to drive off Old South Road, all the way down Dave Kim Lane, all the way across the Pitt property, into a more circuitous road to get out to Skyline. I think, in real life, what's gonna happen is, it's gonna become a very convenient access point for the people who live on Skyline Drive in that area, in Woodland Drive, but really for very few other people. But the traffic study will bear that out, and will be responsible for that, and the Planning Board and the planning staff will be responsible for that in all the hearings that'll occur. And if the numbers show that that impact is gonna be too great on the neighborhood, the Planning Board won't let us have a road there, and the planning staff won't recommend it. And we're comfortable with that process, and the community has that protection, both in the law and the bylaw, and in the contractual agreement that we just signed with the Board of Selectmen. That's the most significant portion of this agreement and this approach to do this local control voluntary collaborative process, is we're not relying on a bureaucrat on Beacon Street in Boston to tell us how to run this thing. It's all of us in the room. It's all of us in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Joanne Johnson. Are there controls on the resale of the affordable lots, or are those homeowners able to resell at fair market value? And if there are controls, are there in the form of a permanent deed restriction?
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. Very good question. There are absolutely, all the affordable housing units that are gonna be sold will be restricted through a deed restriction that exactly matches the legally binding deed restrictions that you see with the Nantucket Covenant Home and that you see with any of the state affordable housing. So, those will be recorded against the property. They'll be enforceable. And in fact, even though this is not being processed as a 40B project, we're gonna enter into the same binding monitoring that Ms. Barrett talked about voluntarily to make sure there can be no violation, and people can't go off and sell those homes for excess profit. And at the moment, we are looking to retain Housing Nantucket to serve that function. They're qualified under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Mass Housing Department to be a qualified monitor for that purpose, and we're talking about retaining for that purpose. So, again, even that portion of the project, we're using local control, a local organization that you know, the Board of Directors that you deal with and that are your neighbors, and Anken Cuspa. We're not using a consultant out of Boston. We're not using a law firm out of Boston. We're using a Nantucket firm for a Nantucket project. Oh, and Patty just made a good point that I glossed over during my initially incompetent presentation. The affordability that we're offering here will be contractually perpetual, in perpetuity for all those affordable units, being both the single-family and the rentals. And that'll be contractual through these deed riders, and it's set forth, as Town Council could confirm, in one of the first or second provisions in this MOA. Most of the 40B projects that are done in the state now are only for 30-year commitments. We're willing, day one, to make a perpetual commitment to this community for that affordability, guaranteed.
The gentleman on the brown sweater.
Hello. Mark Palmer. Just wondering if you could quickly comment on what's being done to minimize the electric demand, you know, National Grid? What's the projected draw on the electrical system and so on?
Sure. Madam Moderator, through you.
Yes.
We've started to look into that in some more detail. We've had some preliminary discussions with National Grid and with the town's energy coordinator, Lauren Sinatra, who's been very involved and proactive and is gonna continue to be so. We don't know the exact development plan yet, so we don't have exact loads, but that will be part of the studies and the analysis that we're gonna submit to the Planning Board through the Planning Board Special Permit Process. And all of that will be laid out in detail. But I will say, for a relatively small town, and we at the Richmond Company do work all over the Northeast, from New Jersey to Maine, large towns, suburban towns, small towns, for a relatively small town, and given the geographic isolation of the community, there's a very sophisticated infrastructure in here in place with Lauren and her department, and we're gonna work closely with her and that department and with National Grid. We talked at great length during the discussions with the Board of Selectmen over the last couple weeks about energy efficiency and trying to make those houses and apartments be as efficient as possible, and to try and conserve as much as possible those important resources, and we're committed to doing that.
Thank you. Right behind you.
Is it on? Yeah. Thank you. Richard Glidden, once again, I promised myself I wouldn't speak. I've been practicing real estate law on this island for 41 years, and I think I've probably been to more Planning Board meetings than any living person anywhere, more Planning Board meetings on Nantucket anyhow.
I think John McLaughlin would take exception with that.
It'd be, it'd be close. And over those 41 years, every time there's a meeting or discussion about a subdivision, we always, lip service is paid to affordable housing, but that's all that's ever been done for 41 years. And here we are, in 2015, and we have a real problem. And this, the extra load on the infrastructure and all these issues which the Planning Board has to deal with. No, there aren't people lining up on Hyannis to come here. The people are here. We have thousands, hundreds of people who don't have a place to live. And it's unbelievable. It's outrageous that a community like this can be in this situation. And now we've got a guy, listen, Richmond's not doing this because they're nice people. They wanna make a buck, and I'm sure they will make a buck if they do this the right way. But they're gonna make a buck either way, and they'd rather work with the town and get us some housing and begin to deal with a problem that no one has ever wanted to deal with for the whole 40 years that I've been practicing law. And I think we should move ahead, recommend this, and go home.
Mr. Cohen?
He's called the question, Madam Moderator.
Okay. So, Mr. Cohen has called the question. That's not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will end debate. A no vote will not adopt that motion. We'll go back to discussing the motion on Article Two. So, all the, it does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote adopts the motion, and we go right to a vote on the article. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor of moving the question on Article Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay. So, I declare that that is adopted by a two-thirds vote. Now, we're on the main motion on Article Two. It's the motion as printed in the warrant with no changes. This does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
I declare that that is adopted by a two-thirds vote. Article One. Article One starts on page one, continues to page two, where the Planning Board motion is, and continues to page three with the Finance Committee comment that we read in at the beginning of the meeting. As discussed with the last article, both the Planning Board comment and the Finance Committee comment are informational only. What you'll be voting on is the main motion of the Planning Board, which ends on page three with the words, and filed here with, at the office of the town clerk. I'll recognize Chairman Barry Rector of the Planning Board for the purpose of making that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? That motion is made and seconded. And just to get it over with early, Ms. Rector, will you state that the Planning Board is recommending favorable action on Article One?
So moved.
Thank you very much. So, discussion on Article One. Who wants to start us off? Mr. Law, I think you called this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I just want to thank everyone for bearing this in the evening together. This has been a great discussion. And I, as I said at the beginning, this is a companion article with the previous article, so I would ask to move the question and vote positively on this article.
Well, you can't move the question after you've had all that stuff to say.
Okay. Sorry.
But let's see, what does Mr. DeCosta have to say?
There you go. Two locals. Thank you.
All right. So, I guess I'll just take a quick vote on the motion to move the question. We'll just go right to a vote, if that's adopted, right to a vote on Article One. Otherwise, we'll have a discussion. So, just on the motion to move the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That is adopted by a declared two-thirds vote. On Article One, the motion is as printed in the warrant. It does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. I declare that passes as a declared two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. And I will recognize Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. DeCosta, for the purpose of making a final motion to dissolve the 2015 special town meeting.
My favorite three words, Madam Moderator. Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.